Virtually, we will proceed directly to the roll call. Clerk Treasurer Aldrich, will you call the roll, please?
Gail Connor. Sandy Flora.
Present.
Mike Isley.
Present.
Spencer Kingery.
Spencer, you're muted.
Present.
Cody Nelson.
Here.
We move next to election of President Pro Tempore as required by Indiana Code. Nominations are now in order for the Office of President Pro Tempore. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Cody Nelson.
I'd like to nominate. I would like to nominate Spencer Kingery.
Are there any further nominations? Without objection, nominations are closed. We will proceed with the Viva Vote election. The nominees for President Pro Tempore are Cody Nelson and Spencer Kingery. Pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order, I will call for votes of the nominees in the order in which they were nominated. As soon as one of the nominees receives a majority vote, I will declare the nominee elected and no votes will be taken on any remaining candidates. Since we are attending virtually, the vote will be taken by roll call when your name is called. If you are in favor of Cody Nelson for President Pro Tempore, say aye. If you are opposed, say nay. Gail Connor.
Aye.
Sandy Flora.
Nay.
Mike Isley.
Nay.
Spencer Kingery.
Aye.
Cody Nelson.
Nay.
Next is a vote for Spencer Kingery. Gail Connor.
Nay.
Sandy Flora.
Aye.
Mike Isley.
Aye.
Spencer Kingery.
Aye.
Cody Nelson.
Aye.
So Spencer Kingery is the new President Pro Tempore of the Common Council for 2021. We move next to reading of minutes and approval. The minutes from the December 7th meeting, regular meeting have been presented for approval. Are there any additions, subtractions, deletions, or amendments to this set of minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I heard Spencer as the first, is that correct? Okay, and Mike, I think I heard you in next for the second.
Yes.
Okay, when your name is called, please signify with an aye, nay, or abstain. Gail Connor.
Aye.
Sandy Flora.
Aye.
Mike Isley.
Aye.
Spencer Kingery.
Aye.
Cody Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next are the minutes from the December 30th, 2020 meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, amendments to the set of minutes?
I have none in what motion that we passed the December 30th minutes.
Cody has moved to accept. Is there a second?
I'll second up.
Spencer, seconds. We'll move to the vote. Gail Connor. Gail Connor. Your vote on the minutes. You're not coming through, Gail. Can you check your audio?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Sandy Flora.
Aye.
Mike Isley.
Aye.
Can hear me now, aye.
Yes, we can, thank you, Gail.
I did, so I.
Spencer Kingery.
Aye.
And Cody Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carries. The council has been presented with written Department Head reports. Craig Myers has also provided since his report, the final water numbers for December. The city pumped 29,791,000 gallons. IPC used 23,211,188 gallons. Without objection, the Department Head reports are incorporated by reference into the minutes. Before we proceed to new business, I would like to address some unfinished business from our last meeting on the 20th and provide an update to the discussion that took place at that meeting in which it was stated by the councilperson that the State Board of Accounts had grave concerns with how the city of Delphi is being managed. Two SBOA individuals were mentioned by the councilperson, Todd Caldwell and Susan Gordon. I reached out to Todd Caldwell on December 31st to follow up on those expressed concerns. As Mr. Caldwell was on vacation at the time, he returned my call this morning. When asked if he felt that the city of Delphi was being mismanaged, he responded that State Board of Accounts would never provide such a representation. He indicated that it is the State Board of Accounts' duty to respond to procedural questions as presented and not to make management characterizations. Mr. Caldwell stated that if there were ever a grave level of concern about any community, the State Board of Accounts would be in there with an immediate audit. He also indicated that in reviewing his responses from this past year regarding Delphi, he found nothing that could have implied that level of concern. When asked if there was a specific list of items to be addressed in the Delphi audit, he indicated that encumbrances and CARES Act accounting were on the list. He volunteered that CARES Act accounting was on the list of many communities since procedural guidance from the state had not been well defined. Clerk Treasurer Aldrich, do you have anything you would like to add?
Yes, I do. Keep in mind, Monday and Tuesday, I put in a total of 31 hours. So when we came to the point where it Wednesday, my meeting, I'm tired and probably a little tender. But when that statement was made, I could do nothing at that time. But the next morning, I put a call in to Susan Gordon. I think my head knew, but I was hurt. So I wanted to hear it from Susan. Susan informed me that there was no way that she ever made a remark like that, nor would she because her job was so hard to be at a help desk. That means whether it's a clerk treasurer calling in, it is a councilperson, or a board of work person, or it is a person from our community wanting some information on how to interpret stuff, that's what they are there, they're to provide the codes, they're to provide procedures, they're to provide forms. But in no way are they to make a decision and base this on anything. If, if someone calls in repeatedly and brings up certain issues, it will be noticed and it will be addressed on the next audit. But for example, the CARES is going to be practically on everyone's list because it was very loosely handled. We've, we've, we've kept a complete record plus we're fixing a binder which has it for State Board. And we have zeroed out on each, each one of them. But that would be addressed at audit time. And because issues, certain issues have been brought to the State Board Help Desk on multiple occasions, it has been noted and will be addressed in our audit. But these things are negative. And if we continue to work with negative thoughts and actions, we, we hurt ourselves. We've got really a great city here. We've got a great group at this city building that wants only the best for this city. We've got lots of wonderful residents in this town that are counting on us. But if we're so busy looking for the worst in everything, we can't be content enough to do the best for everyone.
Right.
It's, it's, it's one thing to say that you want things right. But there is a way to do it, there's the right questions to ask, and there's ways to do it. I have yet, I have yet to had a request directly to me to sit down, discuss something, find out how we actually apply it or handle it here at the city and go from there. Instead, I have a file folder full of requests for information, but no correspondence directly with me. With all this said, I think it's time to stop and think about what we could do if we would all just work together. Bring your questions and concerns at any time. And, and don't just ask for a report and don't expect some communication. That's what we're here for. And if that makes it better for all of us, this office will be happy to do so.
Thank you. We move next to the selection of a council member to the Carroll County Area Plan Commission. Nominations are now in order for the appointment to the APC. Are there any nominations?
How many I saw for Area Plan?
Spencer Kingery. Aye, Spencer. Are there any further nominations? The council has two nominations.
I'm sorry, I think I lagged for a second. Can you, who's the two nominations?
We only have one mentioned, and that's Spencer.
Who was, who was last year's?
Sandy Flora.
Sandy Flora.
Are you interested in doing it again, Sandy?
I, I guess I thought there was only one of us on there. I mean, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll go wherever you guys want me.
I'm sorry, Sandy, I think you are correct. There is only on the, on the area plan, there is a council and then there is a mayor's representative on the area plan. So I apologize, it is just one. And Spencer Kingery has been nominated. Are there any further nominations?
I guess, can I just briefly bring you up like, so it was suggested that, okay, how do I word this? Okay, let's put it this way. I think there's some lag to Gail's screen. And so what I was gonna say is, you know, it was suggested by Mayor Evans that we consider at a new year, looking into new liaison positions with different departments. I don't know how the council feels, but I mean, we could continue going about the same liaison representations or, I mean, if you guys might consider new ones, I don't know if Anita has anything to add.
So I have the liaisons with the departments will come up later. Right now, Cody, we are addressing the appointments by the council to various commissions. And the first appointment to be made is to the Carroll County Area Plan Commission. The council has one appointment and the mayor has a second appointment to the area plan. Spencer has nominated himself for the council appointment. Are there any further nominations for the council appointment?
I just wanted to ask Sandy if this was something she wanted to continue with since she was already on the committee.
Well, I kind of know what's already kind of on the table with area plan. But Spencer would be a very good representative at area plan.
All right, nomination, Sandy Flora.
Mayor Worley, did you have someone in mind for your appointment? Or could we make this work for both of these people tonight?
I will be making my announcement at a separate time. But certainly would consider either candidate. I did make an appointment to this last round and I would like to check with that individual first. So we have Spencer Kingery and Sandy Flora as the nominees. And as we did before with the Viva Vote, we'll first, we'll go in order as the nominations were, were made. And so we'll vote first on Spencer Kingery. And if you are in favor of Spencer's nomination, signify by aye. If not, nay. Gail Connor.
Nay.
Sandy Flora.
Nay.
Mike Isley.
Nay.
Spencer Kingery.
Same, nay.
Cody Nelson.
Nay.
Next is Sandy Flora as the appointment from the Council for the Area Plan Corporation. In favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Gail Connor.
Aye.
Sandy Flora.
Aye.
Mike Isley.
Aye.
Spencer Kingery.
Aye.
Cody Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you. Sandy Flora is the appointment from the council. And I will let you know on the mayor's appointment as soon as I have heard back from my appointment from last year. We move next to selection of a council member to the Northwest Solid Waste District. And Cody, were you on this last year?
I was.
Are there any nominations for the Northwest Solid Waste District?
Cody, do you want to do it again?
I don't mind, it's not a terrible responsibility, it's like meetings a few times a year, so.
I'll nominate Cody.
Are there any further nominations? Without objections, nominations are closed and we will proceed with the Viva Vote election. If you're in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, with nay. Gail Connor.
Aye.
Sandy Flora.
Aye.
Mike Isley.
Aye.
Spencer Kingery. Please.
Aye.
Thank you. Cody is, continues to be the, the appointment to the Northwest Solid Waste District. Next is the Carroll County Administrative Transportation Committee. And I believe, Mike, you are on that, correct?
Correct.
Serving on that committee. So nominations are now in order for the appointment to the Carroll County Administrative Transportation Committee.
Nominate me?
Bold there.
Any further nominations? Without objection, nominations are closed and we will proceed with the Viva Vote election. So those in favor of Mike signify with aye. Opposed, nay. Gail Connor.
Aye.
Sandy Flora.
Aye.
Mike Isley.
Aye.
Spencer Kingery.
Aye.
Cody Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you. Mike is, continues to be the representative to the Carroll County Administrative Transportation Committee. Next is the selection of two residents by the council for the Delphi Redevelopment Commission nominations and these, this particular Redevelopment Commission nominations are made for one year. So are there, nominations are now open? Are there nominations from the council?
Who served last year?
Kevin Gaskell was one of them.
Yeah, and I'm not sure who was a council appointee and who was a mayor, mayoral appointee. The members were Sandy Flora, Joe Mayfield, Lisa Delaney, Kevin Gaskell, and I was on it until appointed mayor and then Gail Connor finished out that, that year.
Gail, are you interested?
Yeah, I'd like to continue. And Kevin Gaskell was the other one that was appointed by the council. The first three that she mentioned were appointed by Mayor Evans.
Were, so you were a mayoral appointee?
No, I took a mid-stake. And yes, I would be interested in continuing.
So I would, yeah, I would nominate Gail to her Redevelopment Commission.
And that was Cody nominating?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further nominations?
I would also like to nominate Randy Strausser.
Randy Strausser, nominated by Sandy Flora.
I would like to nominate Kevin Gaskell. I think he's got a real heart for this.
Are there any further nominations? Without objection, nominations are closed. As before, we'll proceed in the order of nominations and we'll do a roll call vote. First is Gail Connor. Those in favor of Gail's nomination, signify by saying aye. Gail Connor.
Aye.
Sandy Flora.
Is it, are we voting two in or just one in?
We are voting, we will vote for two. But we're really taking this as a candidate at a time.
Okay, aye.
Mike Isley.
Aye.
Spencer Kingery.
Aye.
Cody Nelson.
Aye.
The next candidate in order is Randy Strausser. Signify by aye or nay. Gail Connor.
Nay.
Sandy Flora.
Aye.
Mike Isley.
Nay.
Spencer Kingery.
Aye.
Cody Nelson.
Aye.
So that,
Aye.
With a majority then, our two nominations from the council are Gail Connor and Randy Strausser. And the mayor will announce their appointments within the next week. We're getting feedback, so again, if you're muted in between your votes, which I know is hard. Mike, can you mute? Thank you. So, Senate to Council Resolution 2018-1. I have appointed councilors to one, two departments. Councilor shall meet with department heads to understand the status of equipment and capital assets as well as future objects of the departments. The appointments are as follows. Councilwoman Connor, Aviation and Fire. Councilwoman Flora, Wastewater. Councilman Isley, Water and Clerk Treasurer. Councilman Kingery, Police and Mayor. Councilman Nelson, Streets and Parks. And my intention is to rotate this, you know, every year. So I think you all have different ones than you had last year. Hoping that is the case. We move next to new business and that is Proposed Ordinance 2021-1, which sounds really strange to read 2021, but that's where we are. And I think we're all glad we are there. So Proposed Ordinance 2021, read by Title alone, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordnances for the city of Delphi. This is an ordinance brought every January to the Common Council to amend the Code of Ordnances to incorporate those ordinances that were passed in the previous calendar year. So I would ask for passage on all three readings tonight. Is there a motion to pass the proposed ordinance on first reading?
I would motion we pass 2020, or wow, 2021-1.
And is there a second?
Second.
We have a first from Cody Nelson, a second from Mike Isley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote. Gail Connor.
Aye.
Sandy Flora.
Aye.
Mike Isley.
Aye.
Spencer Kingery.
Aye.
Cody Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to suspend the rules of procedure to allow for passage on the same day as introduction? To pass on same day as introduction, there needs to be a unanimous vote. Is there a motion?
I'll motion it.
Spencer, a second?
I'll second that.
Sandy Flora. All those in favor, Gail Connor.
Aye.
Sandy Flora.
Aye.
Mike Isley.
Aye.
Spencer Kingery.
Aye.
Cody Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Now we move next to the second reading of Proposed Ordinance 2021-1. Read by Title alone, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordnances for the city of Delphi. Is there a motion to pass Proposed Ordinance on second reading?
I'll make that motion.
Tell move.
Yeah, I think I heard Mike. Gail, do you want a second?
Sure, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote. Gail Connor?
Aye.
Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Cody Nelson?
Aye.
We next move to the third, motion carries. Obviously, we move to the third and final reading of Proposed Ordinance 2021-1, read by title alone. Is there a motion to pass the proposed ordinance on third and final reading?
I'm moved.
Gail, a second?
I'll second it.
I think Sandy edged in there. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. Gail Connor?
Aye.
Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery? Spencer Kingery?
Aye, sorry.
Thank you, Spencer. Cody Nelson?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries and the ordinance is passed on all three readings. Thank you. So next on the agenda is a review by the council of the scoring procedures. We've moved this into a, into the regular council meeting. And I think if you're prepared to begin that discussion, President Pro Tim Kingery, would you like to lead that?
I said, let's go ahead and start discussing that.
Well, I think one of the questions was the scoring rubric and I believe I've got it up here somewhere. I think this is a sample business. It does have a name, but this was a sample that was used for the purposes of of looking at scoring.
Is it open discussion or?
Yes, this is a work session.
Oh, okay, okay. So, yeah, so I was thinking about this, I mean, since we did it last time on and off. And then I thought about it more recently because we're going to be doing it again. By no means is it a perfect, perfect system. However, I was thinking, we had some issues and questions of whether, you know, from city council members, say, one business scored very highly and another city council scored very lowly. Yeah, there's always going to be some variability in scales when you scale something like your projection of zero to 10 pain is not somebody else's projection of zero to 10 pain. But through councilmen to councilmen, it should average out. So if a business is scored very lowly by three and highly by two, you know, it's going to have more of a net, you know, I guess, low score than overall when you average them out by five. So even though it is not a perfect system, I mean, generally, there can be some consensus found between all of council members and how that averages out at the very end. So I, I think one addition I would like to see made is honestly, just a yes or no question. Do we feel that under the circumstances and the documentation provided that such business deserves or is eligible in this grant for any money at all? That would be, I guess, from my point of view, the only addition I would like to see to it. And I guess in that case, if the majority of council members decided that they did not feel that the business should be eligible or is otherwise undeserving for whatever reason, then, you know, I feel that the majority at that time would choose.
So again, could you state how you would like to see that worded as a yes no question?
With provided documentation, let's see, so with provided documentation, this council member feels that this business is appropriate for receiving requested funds of whatever they choose. I don't know if we're doing the whole businesses requesting, you know, what they want or it's just a flat sum at this time. But I think that question, that wording would have worked pretty well.
Okay, I think I caught that and I'll send that back out to all of you for any changes that you might suggest.
And if anybody wants to change the language on that, I, as long as the concept remains, I don't care how it's worded.
So this, I think what your intent is, if I'm understanding, is to kind of get past that, that range of, you know, some voting this, you know, very highly and others low and in between. And so this is just a sort of an up down.
Yeah, basically, this is like a, regardless of scoring, like a yes no question. Is this business deserving of such money or not?
Any others, comments on how the scoring rubric should work or were there other concerns in terms of how the rubric was applied? The procedures that were followed? I think everyone signed a non-disclosure form. We will continue to do that. Do, Cody's question of the yes no would get to this, but we have had at least one business apply that is outside of the corporate boundaries of the city. So we would probably want some guidance on how to handle that. Again, I think it should be that that's where this yes no could certainly come in and then a reason for the rejection, if that's the case. Is that kind of how you see this process proceeding? It is the council that will be linking.
Doesn't the application state that they have to be within the study limits?
Yes.
Okay, so that would negate anybody applying from outside. My concern the last time we had discussions, it came up that a few council persons said they just gave all the points because they wanted everybody to get the maximum amount of money. And that was a concern that the scoring rubric, we were supposed to follow it in a certain way and it was supposed to be objective. And if we're just going to give points, everybody gets all the money. Seems like a lot of work if we're not going to follow the scoring rubric. And there were businesses that didn't complete their paperwork the last time. And that was a prerequisite of applying and receiving. So I just, I think we need to stay as objective as possible so that everyone's on a level playing field.
I agree with Gail on that. I want to make sure that, you know, if businesses apply for money, they follow the basic instructions that are, you know, set for this. All documentation should be required that we request if they want, you know, the grant money.
I would also, I guess I would agree with both of you. Yeah, I think Gail's spot on there. And the fact that if they don't have the documentation we requested or has no other way to fill it, then I would just discard those applications.
I would agree with that also. Because any time you apply for any kind of grant, you're going to have documentation. So I do believe that is important in this instance as well.
And just from the last
Sorry. One thing we left table last time was deciding how to delineate whether they got 100% of their request or a certain, you know, 90, 80. And I'm not sure we, we came to anything harder and fast with that. So that may be something we need to look at again. I know we talked about it, like they had a certain percentage of points from the rubric. They would get 100% of their ask. If they had this level of points, they would get 90% of their ask. But I'm not really sure we left anything definitive there.
I like that concept.
Be something we need to take a look at at a later time.
I, I think that could be met with a question of, so in addition to my question, just adding on to the bottom of the scoring criteria category is just like adding another, I guess it'd be before the sentence that I said earlier, but you could just say like, what percentage do you feel that this business should be eligible for? So obviously, if somebody put zero, the next question would be like, no. Or if you were 100%, obviously, yes, you want them to get some money. So I feel like those two concepts can be pretty well handled with like just two quick questions.
I think we need to make sure that we're objective and less subjective. Once you go into questions where you ask for a person's thoughts or feelings, it becomes subjective. And I think we need to keep this as objective and data driven as possible.
I'd agree with that, but we also need to remember our businesses are struggling too. I'm all in favor of the paperwork. I do paperwork as a nurse and I hate it. Cody knows what we do. I hate paperwork, but I know it's necessary and things like this. But talking to business owners, we also need to remember that we want to keep them business. They've got families, they've got employees. I know we have to have certain things met, criteria met with this paperwork. I'm not against that at all. And we need to be objective and keep that. But we also need to keep in mind, we don't want to lose any businesses and we need to try to keep helping as much as we can. That's why we're in the positions we're in right now, to try to help the city.
I agree with Mike on that. I'm sorry, there you go.
I was a business owner in Delphi and I cannot imagine, I cannot imagine what these businesses are going through now just because of the worry you have on a day to day basis, just running your business. I, we aren't Delphi without these businesses. And if we lose our businesses, we become one of those communities that's just the place where you slow down on your way to somewhere else. And I do not want that for Delphi.
While I don't disagree with any of that, I, I guess, I think maybe some of the concerns that Gail kind of mentioned and I've kind of mentioned, you know, I, I think businesses that are, you know, that it makes sense to help or should be eligible, should. But I can't help but wonder if last time, in terms of maybe there were a few businesses, especially the ones that did not follow up, do the, do the required follow up. You know, there's definitely some exclusions that should have probably happened last time. It's not a perfect system, but generally, yes, I agree with what you're saying, Mike and Sandy. But I see the need for ironing this out a little bit more.
Did we have any business that didn't follow up from the last go around?
We had only one business that did not do their reporting.
Okay.
We have not received an application from that business in this round. So it's kind of a moot point at this particular juncture. But should they apply, then the eligibility says that they had to have completed those requirements.
Okay. How many businesses have applied so far?
I think we're around 12 or 13 now. I just got in three more today. And I know several others who have asked questions or have indicated that they're hoping to get their paperwork in by midweek. So we'll see several more come in, I know.
Okay.